I now call to order the October eighth, twenty twenty four Board of Trustees Meeting, time being six thirty P M. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Clerk, make a roll call, please.
Trustee Cannon.
Here.
Trustee Daly.
Present.
Trustee Moyer.
Present.
Trustee Teetz.
Here.
Trustee Wiegand.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Mason.
Here.
Mayor Shosse.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Are there any amendments to the agenda this evening? No. Are there any conflicts of interest with the agenda this evening? No. Now is the time for public comment. Members of the public wishing to speak will be given three minutes. Sign at the podium. State your name for public record. No public comment. All right, on to a proclamation. Uh, this will be a proclamation for the Community Planning Appreciation Month. Uh, will members of the planning staff please come forward to receive this on behalf of the town? All right, whereas community planning and building shapes the present and future of development in the town of Wellington, and whereas community planning and building provides an opportunity for all residents to be meaningfully involved in making choices to determine the future of their community, and whereas the full benefits of community planning and building require public officials and citizens, um, who understand support and demand excellence in planning and plan implementation, and whereas Community Planning and Building Month offers an opportunity to highlight how planning is essential to recovery and how planners can lead communities to equitable, resilient, and long-lasting recovery, and whereas Community Planning Month recognized nationally gives us the opportunity to publicly recognize the participation and dedication of the experts who have contributed to the future of the town of Wellington. Now, therefore, I, Kayla Shosse, Mayor of the Town of Wellington, Colorado, do hereby proclaim the month of October twenty twenty four as Community Planning and Building Appreciation Month, and I encourage all residents to recognize the dedicated efforts of the planning and building professionals, and appreciation for their many efforts, and I further extend thanks to the planning and building staff, as well as the members of our volunteer planning commission and board of adjustments for their service to the town of Wellington. Um, in witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause a seal of the town of Wellington to be affixed to this on October eighth, twenty twenty four.
Give me a second.
We won.
There we go. You ready? Smile. There we go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Board. Thank you for the recognition for planning staff and building staff.
Absolutely.
Would you like to introduce?
Oh, yeah. Great opportunity.
Thank you. I would like to take that opportunity. Um, I'm Cody Berger, Planning Director. Um, with me tonight is Brittany Lenore. Uh, Brittany is a new member of our, our planning team. She's a Planner Three, uh, recently joined us to fill a vacancy. Um, so we are excited to have her be a part of our team. Not here with me tonight is also, um, Aiden Checkett, is another new member of our planning staff. Um, and we're excited to have him uh, onboard as a Planner One. Um, so we've grown our team a little bit, uh, with some new faces, and we appreciate their help. Um, not here with me tonight is our, our building uh, team, Kelly Dexter, Building Official, uh, Danae Smith, our Permit Technician, and Kristin Agos, um, our Code Enforcement Officer. So very much appreciated too for all the support that the Board gives our team.
Absolutely. Well, thank you and welcome aboard.
Thanks. I should also recognize Patty Lundie under her, her new role in the Finance Department, but in, until recently supported the Planning Department staff, and so we appreciate all of her contributions as well. Absolutely. Thank you. Thanks.
All right, I will now close the regular meeting and open the Library Board, time being six thirty-five P M. Uh, Ms. Clerk, will you take a roll call, please?
Trustee Cannon.
Here.
Trustee Daly.
Present.
Trustee Moyer.
Here.
Trustee Teetz.
Here.
Trustee Wiegand.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Mason.
Here.
Mayor Shosse.
Here.
All right, and we have Mr. Ross La Genaise.
You got it.
The Library Director will present this item to the Board, Mr. La Genaise.
Thank you. So, yes, I am Ross La Genaise, and I am your Wellington Public Library Director. Um, so, some people know about way back when, um, I was a middle-level teacher, um, and I taught at a bilingual school. So, when you teach at a bilingual school for second language learners, you always use every mode of learning, audio, visual, kinesthetic, um, to provide contextual clues to words and phrases. It's a hard habit to break. If you see my social media, I'm always using my hands. That's how I roll. Um, so honoring those visual learners, because I know there are a couple of you that are visual learners, I want to pass, I want to pass this to each of you, and have you take a look at it, and there's a reason. For those that are viewing, it is a manual lever with two coins on it. We have a short agenda tonight, so I thought I'd take some time. Does anybody know what it is?
Gear shifter?
It's a gear shifter. With two dimes on it, a pair of dimes. Keep going, keep going. It's a paradigm shift.
Fun.
So this sits on my desk in my office, and it reminds me that four years ago, when I, when I became the Director of the Wellington Public Library, I decided we needed a big paradigm shift. I was asked to put Wellington Public Library on the map and do some different things. Um, I do have a background in business, so I looked at our library, and I think in the last four years, um, we as a town have a lot to be proud of. Um, I knew that we had to connect to everything. We had to connect to other cities, we had to connect to other programs, we had to connect within the city. Um, and I became more business-minded. We have shareholders, that's how I look at it. Yes, we have patrons, but we have shareholders. Um, their teeth are in the game. Uh, we needed to be fiscally diligent and responsible, and we had to have hard numbers and data. So tonight, I'm very happy again to report an increase in numbers. Um, also, this reminds me when I look at it that we always have to change gears. Sometimes it's daily, sometimes it's weekly, always to remain relevant. So we are always changing gears. This year, we introduced new programming. We invited, and we host the Digital Navigators, which has been great for our community. The Digital Navigators are in-house, um, and you can make appointments with them. They increase and teach digital, sorry, digital skills and literacy to those wanting higher accessibility and increased access. I've asked them questions before as well. Um, we are working on an extension possibly for four more years, so that would be great news. It really is utilized. We have also connected intensely with ARC of Laramo County. Um, the last Wednesday of every month, they are in-house in the library, um, and they are an advocacy group for disabled support in all areas. Um, so please come in. If you want privacy with them, we do have rooms for privacy if you'd like to talk to them. So they have been great to work with. Um, this year, I connected with the Junior Achievement with Rice Elementary, um, and it grew into Entrepreneur Programming with third graders, and some of you saw they participated at the farmer's market, and they made a lot of money, which is great. Um, we've also extended our connection to school-age population with clubs. We launched this year the Middle School Club, so we have middle schoolers coming in for a book club, um, field trips, carnivals, et cetera. And the reason I'm sharing all of this is that we asked last year for an increase in programs. What we did is we added the Taiko Japanese Drummers to the Summer Reading Program. I know, they were great. Um, Pop Art Collage, Rocky Mountain Raptors Program, we were able to bring them back, and we reached out to the Denver Museum of Nature and Science, and they did a three-part STEM program with our youth. Um, we increased our evening and weekend accessibility for working families um, and caregivers. Now, because of all of this, I did supply in the packet our numbers. The numbers were pulled from the first of January to October first. So we had a twenty-one percent increase in new patrons. That is new people coming into the library. We also had a ten percent increase in circulation. Circulation keeps us alive. I also wanted to share briefly that our total patron count, I've always told you that we took away the door, dinger, thinger? It's hard numbers. Here's our, here's our binder, every day. So there's a human error of plus or minus two percent, but this gives me raw data, so I can look at this time compared to last year. Have we grown? So we had a seven percent increase in our total patron count. In our total event count, we had a twelve percent increase, and our total patron count with events was an eight percent increase. So this was pulled, the numbers from the beginning of the year until September thirtieth. The reason I'm sharing these numbers is the increases that I ask for is a good return on investment. We earn it, and we try to prove it every single day. Um, so again, to our shareholders, because we do consider them shareholders, we work very hard, and we hope that we honor you, and we hope that we can continue. So I have no further updates unless you have any questions or concerns or comments.
Questions, comments. Trustee Teetz?
In your graphs, because I'm the visual learner that you were discussing, um, some of the graphs have a Knoll listing. Do you know what the Knoll listing is?
That's an odd one. That, so what we do, so this is pulled from our software, from our Aspen Cat. So what you look at is, and you, I know it's kind of hard to read. You can see all the figures. It's just how our programming works through the system. Um, you can see the codes up at the, um, at the top, so that you can see, where is my, I'm looking for the Knoll. Do you mean I L L? Oh, you're looking at the graph. The graph is just, the graph just comes up. I've never even looked at the graph, the pie graph.
Perfect.
It's the numbers I look at, the raw data.
Got it.
Does that answer your question?
It does.
I can read and ask what Knoll is. I L L means interlibrary loan, so that's also gone up. So the materials that we have, other libraries want, which is great.
Awesome. Trustee Cannon?
Looks like you're doing a wonderful job there. My wife really enjoys going to the library, and she, she likes these Bill O'Reilly books, killing presidents, killing this, killing this, whatever.
Don't talk about patron.
Anyway, but it's, it's kept her busy recently, you know, with her health problems and such like that, be able to sit down and just relax and read a book, and, and it's just been marvelous. So.
Good.
Thank you for everything you're doing there.
Good.
Thank you. Trustee Moyer?
Yeah, congratulations. Um, clearly, the library is something that's super necessary, and people in town are very passionate about, so thank you to you and your staff for everything that you all do. The numbers are impressive and amazing, um, and the programming is beyond that. Um, I've been so grateful to see the variety and the different ages that you're touching. Um, you really are touching everybody, and I honestly don't know who had more fun at the drum presentation, Trustee Daly and myself, or my child. Um, it was just awesome. So thank you so much for what you're doing.
Thank you. Trustee Wiegand?
Ditto on everything everybody else is saying. You're doing a fantastic job, and keep it up, and try to have a little more energy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Daly?
Hi, Ross. Thank you so much. You're doing a great, hi. Uh, you guys are doing such a great job. What I want to commend you for specifically is that, um, I feel like I've attended more cultural events at our library than maybe anything else I've ever done in our town. Um, so I think you bring a really, really amazing dynamic to our town and provide so many opportunities to learn about people and places, and I really appreciate that. The other thing I want to talk about really quickly is that I have spoken to several families, and they have admitted that the library is one of the only places where they feel super safe and welcome. Um, and I know that's because of the environment that we've built there, um, and I'm so proud of that. Uh, and I think it's a, a guiding light for a lot of the other organizations in town to just make sure that we're super welcoming. So thank you for making this a safe place.
Always. It means a lot.
Thank you, Trustee Daly.
Mayor Pro Tim? Well, thank you, Director La Genaise. Uh, really appreciate all the hard work you've been doing here. Uh, you certainly, it looks like you've been working on your sequel queries here. I might be able to give you a hand with that Knoll value. I think that just needs to be removed from this particular graph. I'm happy to help you with that if you'd like.
You can talk to Bob.
Sounds good, sounds good. Um, other than that, really, like I said, really appreciate all the work you've done, and so, thank you.
Thank you.
No, you've always done a wonderful job. Um, your heart's in it. You, you care about the people of this town. Um, you're very fiscally responsible, um, but it's your heart and how you lead, and everybody underneath you leads that same way in your department because of that. Um, it all starts from the top down. So, um, thank you for all that you do and continue to do for the library and for the town of Wellington. Thank you.
Thank you for the support. Oh, I went ahead. Thank you for the support, everybody. Okay.
Perfect. Well, thank you, sir.
Well, thank you. Can I have my paradigm shifter?
Oh, it's right here. You betcha.
All right, hearing no further discussion or deliberations from the Board, I will now close the Library Board and reopen the regular meeting, time being, uh, six forty-eight P M. And I will now close the regular meeting and open the Liquor License and Authority Board, time being six forty-eight P M. Ms. Clerk, will you take a roll call, please?
Trustee Cannon.
Here.
Trustee Daly.
Present.
Trustee Moyer.
Here.
Trustee Teetz.
Here.
Trustee Wiegand.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Mason.
Here.
Mayor Shosse.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Um, will the clerk please read the title for item D one?
Liquor license renewal application tavern, Old Colorado Brewing Company.
Thank you. And then will you be presenting as well?
Yes, I will, and I'm just gonna stay here. Um, so in your packet, you'll find the Old Colorado Brewing has submitted their annual renewal for a tavern license to the Town Clerk's Office. The establishment is in good.
I have to interrupt. I'm so sorry. Um, I do have to exclude myself from this because it's quasi-judicial, so I want to make sure that that, sorry to interrupt.
No, thank you. I had that in my notes and frantically was looking for the title and missed that in my notes. So, yes, thank, thank you, Trustee. So, um, the establishment is in good standing with the Secretary State's Office and has a valid sales tax license. As you'll note in the packet materials, there were no concerns expressed by Laramo County Sheriff's Office regarding the annual renewal. Staff recommends approval of the renewal as, as presented, and I stand for any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the Board on this item? Trustee Moyer? Trustee Wiegand? Trustee Teetz?
Um, no questions, just a comment really quick is I always pay attention to the liquor inspection report and all of the notes that are put in by our officers that conduct the inspection. One of the things I wanted to note was a very positive comment that states this was extremely clean, everything well organized and labeled, and all employees tips-trained, all records digital. So it's, I want to give them kudos, um, for having a large amount of organization, and it's not often we see these little notes that go that way, so I was happy to see a positive comment in that comment box.
Thank for, thank you for that. Uh, Trustee Cannon? Mayor Pro Tim? All right, are there any comments from the public on this item? No public comment. Um, do I hear a motion on this item?
I move to approve the Old Colorado Brewing Company LLC DBA, Old Colorado Brewing Company Tavern Liquor License Renewal Application. Second?
Ms. Clerk, make a roll call, please.
Trustee Cannon.
Yes.
Trustee Daly. Oh, yeah, sorry. Trustee Moyer.
Yes.
Trustee Teetz.
Yes.
Trustee Wiegand.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Mason.
Yes.
Mayor Shosse.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. All right, I will now close the Liquor License Authority Board, time being six fifty-one P M., and reopen the regular meeting, time being six fifty-one P M. All right, first thing's gonna be a presentation, um, from Ms. Stephanie Anderson, Human Resource Director, regarding the twenty twenty-four compensation study. Um, we'll receive information regarding the options for conducting the town administrator's performance evaluation, Ms. Anderson.
Good evening. Give me one moment while I get that presentation pulled up.
Yeah, by all means.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and trustees. I'm Stephanie Anderson. I'm the H R Director. Um, I am here tonight with two topics to discuss. First, I want to talk about our compensation study, and then following that, I will talk about the performance review for Ms. Garcia, our town administrator. All right, so the town selected Graves Consulting to perform our compensation study. Graves Consulting, they are an H R firm that is very familiar with Northern Colorado and with um, public sector. They have done a lot of compensation studies within this region, so they brought to us a lot of really great data. Um, they definitely came highly recommended, and our staff really appreciated the expertise in all of the data that they shared with us when we're talking about setting our compensation for twenty twenty-five. So, and today, it is me presenting rather than Graves. It just saves us a little bit of money to not have them come out here, and they were really clear with what they presented to us, so I feel very confident bringing that information back to you. All right, so compensation, it can be viewed as the value that an organization places on employees. Our town really values our staff here. We want to make sure that we are paying them at the market rate. So our town conducts these studies every two years, and again, it's helping to make sure that we are paying competitively with the market, which helps us not only hire staff, but also retain staff. As part of this process, too, we look at internal equity to make sure that our pay practices are equitable, and we also want to make sure that there's opportunity for growth and development of our current staff. So the study is conducted by pulling current market data. Um, we also consider aging just based on this data is gonna be for twenty twenty-five, then reviewing and revising our pay structures so that we can beat that market data. So to give you a little bit deeper of an analysis, um, to kick off the study, we verify that our job descriptions are up to date. Next, we needed to find comparable jobs, and we want to make sure that the job duties, it's not gonna be the same job in one town compared to another. So we really are looking at the responsibilities within each of the positions to find the right data to attach it to, and we're comparing with other places. So there's some scoping that happens, and then, um, this is again where Graves comes in and was a really good partner for us, is because they work with other municipalities. They just did a study in Timnith, so we definitely got a lot of good data points to connect to. So once we have pulled that data, um, we align the positions, scoped as needed, and all of our data is based on people's actual salaries in other locations. And then, um, once they're matched up, we do job grade alignment, so we're looking at pay grades, making sure that they fit in with the structure. And we want to make sure when we're looking at these pay grades, that we are looking bottom to top, side to side, across the whole organization, so we know somebody in a pay grade that's working in public works the same pay grade over in planning, that they have the same level of responsibility, and we're recognizing their pay for that. All right, so study results. So just to give you a little bit of context here, we did a study in twenty twenty-two, and it had been a little while since we'd really looked at it. During that study, twenty-eight positions were identified for a pay change, which totaled over a hundred thousand dollars of increased budget for our twenty twenty-three budget. This year during the study, um, we only identified twelve people for a pay change with the total financial impact of thirty-eight thousand dollars, which will be built into the twenty twenty-five budget. Of those positions, um, six of them were, um, due to the positions being in a different grade, that we had to bring them up to the minimum, and then the other six were due to some internal equity, making sure that our staff within the ranges are paid based on their qualifications. We really want to make sure that, um, compensation is viewed as equitable across town. We also, from the study, went from fourteen up to sixteen pay grades. What this does for us is it builds some space in between our positions, so as we grow, we're gonna have spaces that we can put jobs in and provide more opportunity for growth. All right, so this is the pay structure. It is a ton of numbers on one page, so I apologize that it's small, but what this looks at, um, if you're looking at the grades, so again, it's a hundred up through one sixteen, these different grades are gonna be in every different department, so it isn't just hundreds are in this department, not here, but they're across all of the different departments. So in here, you can see what each one of the grades, what the minimum, the midpoint, and the maximum is, and then it also talks about how we built it, or how Graves built it. Um, the distance at the end, talking about ten percent, that's looking at the midpoint. It's ten percent in between each one, and then the width of each of these pay grades. And then I wanted to demonstrate for you, um, staff's actual wages. So the horizontal or the X-axis, it is showing, um, the pay grades, so you can see all those numbered, and then the vertical axis demonstrates the actual wages. So the three lines that you see, the bottom one is the minimum of the pay grades, then the midpoint, then the maximum. So when we make adjustments to pay grades, it doesn't mean that we're increasing everybody's pay up, but it, um, it does mean that people have more room to grow within the grades, and as you can see from our graph, is people have space, which is what we want to see. All right, um, so these changes, we're proposing that they would go into effect as of January first, twenty twenty-five, so the twelve impacted staff members would receive that pay change come the turn of the year, and also this new pay grade structure as well goes into effect. Um, we do plan again to run the study again in two years, and I think it's telling that by us staying on top of it, we had a much less financial impact than waiting too long, that we definitely saw a decrease in the amount, so we do want to continue to run the study every two years. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Trustee Moyer?
No questions. Just wanted to say that when you are a part of an organization that has an equitable, um, pay structure, room for advancement, and a focus on, um, really taking a look at being fair and equitable across not only the organization, but other organizations like yours, it makes such a difference in the culture and the motivation for employees, um, and how they feel, and, um, the worth that they feel is, uh, given to them and the respect. So I'm really excited that you all did this. I'm excited for, um, the increases for those that need them, and I just, uh, want to point out that in our strategic planning sessions, we did talk a lot about culture with staff and retention and the relationships and all of that. Um, one of them even made it on to our strategic plan and the cultivate effective, uh, sorry, invest in, retain, and hire skilled staff, and this is what's going to do that. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Trustee Teetz?
Thank you for this. I, I've walked through these numbers with you previously, so it, this one is a little bit more organized and not on a very big poster board. Um, my question comes is grade one hundred and one oh one. Can you give me an example of what that position would look like within the town of Wellington?
I can. So, um, grade one hundred, that is where our library clerks, so that position would fall under that grade. Um, some of our seasonal staff are in that one hundred grade as well. One oh one, um, those ones, I, I would have to relook, but I believe that that is gonna be some of our, um, Parks Worker One positions. So it's definitely, um, some positions that we definitely value and care about, and when you look at our graph, you can see that as you get into the higher number, um, positions, the, the dots on the graph are a little bit. as you get into the higher number, um, positions, the, the dots on the graph are a little bit lower, but people that are in the classifications around the one hundred, one oh one, we're definitely, um, hiring and having our staff closer to the midpoint for those range of positions.
Got it. So, and that was kind of one of my questions when I was looking at your graph. When I go down a little bit lower, I see that floating between the, um, minimum and midpoint for those, those grades. So, I just, I, when I look at it, and when you hire to retain, um, some of these positions are invaluable, support staff and items like that when it comes to our town. And I just, when I'm looking at the pay grade where it's twenty dollars and five cents to twenty-seven oh seven, I look at what they pay at McDonald's, which is, uh, starting at almost twenty dollars an hour. Um, so that, that one right there, I would, I, knowing that our library clerks and our parks and rec staff and items like that, I just, I don't know, I would like to see if there is a possibility of having that wage set a little higher, so we're not competing with the McDonald's and Pizza Hut and I, I'm, and it's not meant to be insulting, it's just one of those generalized ideas that if these people are dedicating their time, I don't know anyone that can live off of twenty dollars an hour full-time. So, that's, I would say that's my con, my concern there. Um, other than that, I'm grateful. This is very organized and I like to see the thirty-eight thousand instead of the hundreds of thousands that we saw when we had to look through all of this in two thousand twenty-two. So, thank you very much.
Thank you for the feedback.
Thank you. Trustee Wigan?
I appreciate the presentation. It's, uh, very well done, and the main thing is, we want to make sure that, uh, our staff does know that they're appreciated. We want to make sure that we have livable wages and compatible wages. I imagine the lower scale is pretty much entry-level positions or part-time, correct?
Part-time, correct. So, that's another area that we see that is part-time positions. Um, it's definitely one of our goals. We do want our full-time staff members to be above fifty thousand. But again, that's why we do these studies too, is we do want to look at all the numbers and make sure that the wages are set properly, so that could be, they're not a full-time employee, which is why they're coming in a little bit lower, but I will double-check on that. I really appreciate you pointing that out to me.
Yeah, I know we have to be frugal to a certain extent, but we definitely want to make sure that our employees do know that they're well-appreciated, and they're doing a great job, so thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Cannon?
Stephanie, thank you so much for putting this together and presenting this. Um, you know, one of the struggles when you run any, any kind of organization with as many employees as, as the town has got, is you want to be fair and equitable, uh, to all the employees across the whole gamut, you know? Someone who's working in public works has advanced licensing and training and so forth like that, and that, and that requires additional, you know, additional dedication. You're more valuable to the town, so therefore, your wages tend to be a little higher for those as opposed to, uh, people that, that don't need those additional trainings or qualifications and so forth. And coming from a management background, I look at this and I, and I see, uh, the distance, and I see the width and, and the pay bands. Um, you know, this is, this is not something you just throw together. I mean, you've, you've really got to do your research, and you've got to study this. Um, and it's nice to see that, that we are following a program for our employees, you know? One of the, one of the struggles you have is if, if you're not... I always made it a priority to make sure we have a good work environment. You know, that, that, you know, leadership and management is doing a good job to lead and motivate and, and create that, that working environment. And if you don't have that, then you, you tend to hear comments like, "They just don't pay me enough to work here anymore." So, we're already doing that, yeah. I think the board is, is very supportive of our staff, admire everything that they're doing, and it's great to see Cody now has, there's three planners there when, when I remember a time when we didn't have any. So, it's nice to see that growth and that professionalism that, that, that comes to the town with that. Um, it's important that we have that range in there, the minimum, the, you know, the, the middle, and also the maximum, because it gives up a mobility within that, within that pay grade. So, I appreciate that, I appreciate all of this. The one question I had, you said that the adjustments that you made would add thirty-eight thousand, one thirty-nine, and you're looking at that for next year's budget, now, is that next year's budget, is that the base? Is that, you know, we haven't talked about salary raises, increases, or anything, uh, for staff that I'm aware of. So, this, this just basically brings the baseline up for these people before the, the budget discussion about, uh, if there's any kind of wage increases?
That, that's a very good question. Um, so it is gonna bring the base up. So, if merit and COLA are approved, that adjustment would come on top of this new wage. So, with, uh, six employees that are coming up to the minimum, they would still start at the minimum, but be eligible for merit and COLA on top of that. The other six that it's due to pay inequity, again, if we then didn't do merit and COLA, we'd have the same issue. So, we're bringing them up to where the pay will be equitable, and then to add on top of that merit and COLA if approved.
Okay, thank you. Uh, and the last comment I want to have on, and, and this kind of goes in line with, with why we do the study, and you talk about retaining, uh, employees. When you get a qualified employee, you lose that person. I think the national study is it costs two and a half times that person's salary to replace them. So, paying people what they're worth, uh, and and ensuring that, that bit of retention saves money in the long run. So, I appreciate everything you're doing. This looks great, and, uh, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Daly?
Uh, retaining and recruiting top talent has been part of our strategic plan for, uh, several years now and ongoing. Uh, so I'm really happy that we're doing this. Uh, it is an example of two of our, our town as an organization maturing, that we're doing this regularly, we're making sure that we're fair and equitable. Um, I'm proud of that, and, and I appreciate you doing this work. Um, paying people what they're worth, uh, and then appreciate them and building on, with them, and helping them learn and achieve new milestones is a way that you build loyalty and trust among a workforce. And, and that type of workforce is so much more effective, um, when they're working for something that they believe in. So, uh, it's essential in my mind, of course, to make sure that they're not working for a discount to work for, to work for Wellington. So, I'm very excited that we're, uh, increasing the base to meet those requirements and the internal equitable adjustments based on those two. So, I, I appreciate this, and, um, there's, it, it's well worth the investment, and I appreciate staff. I think you guys are doing a wonderful job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Number ten?
Well, uh, thank you, Director Anderson, for this presentation, and, uh, thank you to Graves Consulting for, uh, putting this together for us. Um, I did, uh, just want to point out for our residents, uh, as, as far as page twenty-eight of the packet goes and the employee pay uh, chart that we're looking at here, as part of the town's responsibility to be, uh, you know, kind of fiscally conservative with our budget, I think it's worth pointing out that, uh, by far and away, the majority of our employees are well under the, uh, midpoint of this market assessment. So, I did want to point that out, especially when we come into, uh, merit and COLA discussions that are becoming, gonna be coming up as part of this budget season. So, I would encourage the board to remember this when we are looking towards that. Um, other than that, I really appreciate the, uh, presentation, and, uh, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I love how this was put together, um, really easy to read. Thank you for spending the time on it, and, um, I mean, we all, we've all said it, uh, retention is important, and making sure that our employees feel valued, and they're paid for what they do and what they're worth, uh, means a lot. Um, and it's nice that we don't have such a big adjustment as we did prior. And I think continuing to do this every two years is gonna be vital in maintaining, lessening that cost for the town as a whole, so it's not as big of a hit each time. Um, but then also, um, making sure that we're staying competitive in, in the market of government, and making sure that our town employees are, are paid for, for their services and their knowledge. Um, and yeah, to Ed's point, um, when it comes to losing somebody, it is expensive to get them back, um, or get another employee in, in place. I believe, I think it was last year or the year before, we were told like forty thousand dollars, something like that, for a, a mid-range employee to be able to replace them. So, um, that's a lot of money. Um, I think it can be used for other things for the town, and we want to make sure that people are happy and taken care of, and that's what this does. So, thank you. Trustee Moyer?
I just want to say Stephanie is being honored as one of Bizwest's Forty Under Forty, and I just want to congratulate her for that honor and, um, give her a round of applause.
Thank you all.
That as well. Um, so, um, that's all I have to say. Um, thank you very much.
Perfect. Well, I've got a whole nother part to present to you now, but two separate parts. Give me, Mr. Mayor, um, Trustee Daly would like to speak one more time.
Oh, yeah, sure. Trustee Daly?
I was just gonna add on to Trustee Moyer's comment, uh, talking about retaining top talent, and that, if that's not a testament to it, I don't know what else is. Congratulations.
Thank you. All right, enough about me. Let's talk about the town administrator.
Thanks.
All right, so I just wanted to give a little bit of background again. Um, I was here earlier this summer. The town administrator performance evaluation has been conducted in-house alongside the town attorney evaluation in the past. Um, after we talked earlier this year, it was proposed to have this evaluation conducted by an outside vendor for the town administrator and to gather additional feedback from staff members as well in the three sixty evaluation. So, it'd be a shift from just hearing feedback from the board, but it would also include some feedback from some of Ms. Garcia's direct reports as well. So, I did, um, one of the things that was brought up is looking for a software, something we could do fully online. Um, so I looked into that. I looked at Survey Monkey, but ultimately, if we're just sending out surveys, there still is gonna be a lot of it done in-house to try to compile all the results from everybody, put the presentation together, facilitate the presentation. So, I did come to you today with two different, um, proposals from Graves Consulting and then from Employers Council. So, Graves Consulting, um, as I just talked about, they are working, finalizing our compensation study. So, they are very aware of our pay structure. They're aware of how, um, the town is set up. Um, and their proposal is that the Board of Trustees would complete the previous review tool, which I did include in the packet for you to see what has been previously used. And then, alongside that, they would do interviews with members, um, some of Ms. Garcia's direct staff to put together a whole comprehensive three sixty, um, evaluation. They would then put together, uh, executive summary, and then they would present and facilitate the conversation during executive session for the town administrator review. The other proposal is from Employers Council. Um, they would, they could either use our same tool that we have been using, or they do have other tools that they can create. I brought in an example, if people want to see what they've done before, so they could create a separate tool. They would send it out to everybody via email. That would include the Board of Trustee members and, um, some of Ms. Garcia's direct reports as well. Then, they would compile the information and put together the, uh, executive summary. They also have development planning as well to plan for goals and future steps, and then would present it during executive session. So, um, the difference in cost, they're definitely very different prices. Graves Consulting came in at, um, forty-two hundred dollars for the evaluation report and virtual participation during executive session. If we wanted them onsite, it is an additional fifteen hundred dollars for them to be onsite. And then, Employers Council, we are members of Employers Council, and, um, they provide a lot of, um, HR services to us into Colorado. Their study is, um, eight hundred dollars for the report and the creation. And then, if we want them to facilitate, it's a hundred thirty-five dollars per hour to have one of their HR experts to be here for executive session. So, what I am looking for you, or looking for from you, is just some final guidance on which one of these you would like to go with, so I can, um, get them engaged, have them reach out to all of you to send the tools that will be ready for the November twelfth, um, performance evaluation. We are gonna do the, um, town attorney review in-house. That one just, um, it isn't as sensitive as the town administrator's review, and I feel confident to be able to run that either at the end of this year or early in next year. Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Um, we're looking at these samples. Um, anybody have any questions before looking at this packet from Employers Council?
Do you have anything from Graves Consulting on what they present as well?
I do not have an example from them.
Okay.
Just since they, they tailor it for every single organization, and it is confidential once the documents are presented in executive sessions. I'm sure we could ask for a similar template, but they're more interested in using our template and then putting together the summary. I apologize, I should have printed more. I was trying to save some paper.
You're fine, you're fine. Trustee Moore?
My gut reaction without having seen the report from before, um, I was on this board, is I've worked with Employers Council before. They're great. They do a great job. To me, the price tag is what's, um, motivating my decision, and I think that both offer very similar, um, studies, reports. They're both using our current tool. They both talk to leadership. It's all three sixty, so for, um, that difference in price, my initial reaction would be to go with Employers Council.
Thank you. Trustee Wigan?
My initial reaction, again, like hers, is the Employers Council. I think we do need to be, uh, conservative on the money that we expend. It's gonna be an outside source doing the evaluation. That's what we wanted. I know Graves is probably do a fantastic job, but, uh, I think with small steps at a time. I think Employers Council sounds well.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Trustee Daly?
All in for Employers Council. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Teetz?
Um, this doesn't look much different than kind of the exact platform that we had used in previous reviews. Um, so I would say the only other question is, is are we moving with the survey and report creation as well as the onsite executive session? Because that alters the cost, correct?
That would be my recommendation, is having them put it together and present, because even with them coming out, it is still gonna be a significant cost savings for Employers Council, rather than going with Graves, even having them come out. Typically, those executive sessions, they're, it's not gonna last over two hours, even if that. So, I think it is a good investment to still have that facilitation onsite, and then also, just thinking about the budget and the bottom line, that it's definitely just a different price tag.
Got it. Um, and is there anything different as far as Graves Consulting compared to Employers Council on what they are going to be evaluating and presenting?
So, that's the piece I'm not sure about. Graves Consulting, they would have done interviews with staff, um, over the phone via a meeting to gather more feedback rather than just a survey that's being sent out. So, that's one of the biggest differences. And then, the other bigger piece is just, I mean, Graves does this for other organizations. They're really familiar with government. Um, Employers Council, they've produced their documents, so they've done this before for government as well. But, um, again, just, I know that Graves is really familiar with northern Colorado, familiar with how the government is set up up here. I just, I trust their judgment that they bring, but with this study, that's why I, I'm bringing it back to you, because it's a significant change in price.
Got it. Without knowing, um, kind of what a packet looks like from Graves to Employers Council, then I would have to teeter definitely towards paying the lesser cost, since we really haven't done budget planting for two thousand twenty-five yet either. So, I'm fine with Employers Council on this.
Thank you. Trustee Cannon?
Thank you. Uh, I've used Employers Council extensively, uh, over the years, and, uh, they do a marvelous job, uh, as a remote HR. as a remote HR service. I would say stick with Employers Council for the evaluation.
Thank you, sir. Member Tim?
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Certainly, I agree with my fellow board members here on Employers Council. Yeah, it certainly saves us a little bit of money, and considering that we've not done a three sixty evaluation for the Town Administrator in the past, this is certainly something that's above and beyond of what we've done in, done prior. So I think this is a good thing, and we'll get some input from some of our other staff members. So I would stick with Employers Council on this.
Perfect. Thank you, sir. Yeah, definitely Employers Council, that cost difference. I mean, that's almost two employees' annual increase for the previous presentation you just gave us. So, yeah, definitely on, on par with the Employers Council for the direction for you to take there.
Thank you so much. I will engage with Employers Council, and I will keep you all up to date on next steps of when they will be sending out the surveys and kind of what to expect in the timeline with that. But we're definitely going to be moving on this pretty quickly, so we can get everything ready for the executive session on November twelfth.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I, I wanted to add that also that the facilitation is essential. So as part of that, the additional facilitation, I think that is absolutely necessary.
Yep, absolutely. Thank you. All right. Will the clerk please read the consent agenda?
September twenty-four, twenty twenty-four, regular meeting minutes, and Resolution Number fifty-one dash twenty twenty-four, a resolution of the Town of Wellington, Colorado, canceling regular meetings.
Thank you. Do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second. You got it. All right, so we have Wiegand with the second.
Yes.
Clerk, may I get a roll call, please?
Trustee Cannon?
Yes.
Trustee Daly?
Yes.
Trustee Moyer?
Yes.
Trustee Teets?
Yes.
Trustee Wiegand?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Mason?
Yes.
Mayor Shosse?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Onto action item. Ms. Clerk, will you please read the title for item G one?
Memorandum of Understanding Between the Colorado Department of Local Affairs and the Town of Wellington.
Thank you. Ms. Garcia, Town Administrator, will present on this item. Ms. Garcia?
Thank you, Mayor and Trustees Patty Garcia, Town Administrator. We have before you a memorandum of understanding, or MOU, between the Town of Wellington and the Department of Local Affairs and the local Main Street program. This MOU supersedes the agreement that was approved November eighth, twenty twenty-two. Similar to previous MOUs between the Town and the Department of Local Affairs, the agreement outlines the various requirements to be met and how the town will support the Main Street program. A minor edit was made at Section B, and the red line was included in your packet to clarify that funding for the program is subject to appropriation by the Town of Wellington. The Town of Wellington has financially supported the Main Street program since its inception in twenty fourteen, which correlates to the success of the program. During the joint meeting on October twentieth with the Board of Trustees and the Main Street Board, it requested that there be an approved work plan as opposed to another memorandum of understanding between the Town of Wellington and the Main Street program. Last week, two Board of Trustee members, Trustee Daly and Trustee Teets, and two Main Street Board Directors and Wellington staff participated in a facilitated discussion to discuss the twenty twenty-five Main Street work plan. This information will be used over the next couple of weeks to create a work plan that'll be presented to the Board of Trustees on December tenth, twenty twenty-four. So we'll be looking at what their work plan entails, what can we as staff take care of, and what we might be recommending for the board to take on as far as volunteer position. So the MOU is set up, ready for, for adoption, but I stand for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Garcia. Trustee Teets, any questions?
No questions.
Thank you. Trustee Moyer, any questions?
Nada.
Thank you. Trust Wiegand, any questions?
No questions.
Thank you. Trust Cannon, any questions?
I don't have questions, but I've got I've got some thoughts. You know, I've worked with Main Street organizations, and I support Main Street organizations, and don't get me wrong, because I've worked with those organizations for thirteen years in two different states. In fact, when I came to Wellington to be the Town Administrator, I was excited when I heard that we had a Main Street organization, because I know the potential of Main Street now can revitalize the downtown. And it took less than a week for me to figure out how dysfunctional that relationship between the town and Main Street was. I mean, they were butting heads at each other's throats at the time. And a lot of that's personalities and so forth like that. And I'm glad to see that we've made some progress, but I still feel like there's a little bit of a gap between, between, you know, the Main Street organization and the Town of Wellington. You know, when I think about Main Street, Main Street is, is essentially an arm of the local government, because we, you can't have Main Street unless the town agrees to do that and signs this MOU with, with DOLA. But one of the observations I've had in the ten years that the town's been, had a Main Street here is I don't know if the town has given enough support and enough direction and spelling out expectations with the Main Street organization to make sure that we're aligned with, with what we do. I think Main Street is doing some, some great things here, but I'm not sure that we're totally in sync with each other. And I've made a, a recommendation that maybe we need a separate MOU between the town and our local Main Street program to kind of lay out those expectations, not necessarily a work plan that's, I mean, we, we should be approving the work plan to make sure that it aligns with our strategic plan and our strategic objectives for economic development and revitalization of our downtown. I know that this MOU just simply is between us and DOLA, but, but our local program's also a signee on this. I think we need more discussion. The August fifth work session, I was expecting a little bit more follow-up from that, because I, I had a few issues in, in that meeting there. And I just simply want to make sure that our Main Street is doing everything they can to complement our town and, and work on this. And I, and I think maybe to some degree, we've, it's turned into like a substitute for a Chamber of Commerce as opposed to a Main Street that focuses mainly on your downtown corridor. So I think there's more discussion that might be needed with that to help kind of focus Main Street's efforts on that traditional downtown commercial corridor, because that's, that's how it was set up nationally, and that's how it's supposed to be set up here. Our footprint's way too big. I mean, we almost covered the entire town now, so I'm wondering what the benefit of that is, and I'd like to see a little bit more direction from the board to the Main Street organization. It just says, this is what we want. This is, this is what we expect. So let's work together to make sure that happens. So that's my only comment. I don't have a question about the, the MOU, but, but I do have a question about whether or not a separate MOU is just going to be established just for a work plan itself, or if we're going to have a separate MOU that kind of encompasses the work plan, and also maybe other elements that I think might be needed to help make sure that we're both prosperous, Main Street and the town, and we're all on the same page. That's my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Trust Daly?
Hi, I, I am very excited about our Main Street program. Not only are there very dedicated volunteers, but Wellington's Main Street program is actually a shining example across the entire state. We've been recognized as a graduate program and honestly have won awards across the entire state as well. Our Main Street program has partnered with the town to bring in millions of dollars in grants that we'll benefit from and see the results from in the next couple of years as we pretty much, as a legacy project, redo our entire downtown and make a welcoming place that's going to thrive for our entire town. So, given that they are an exceptional example of a Main Street program, and the MOU before us today is essentially MOU that says if we are allowed to have a Main Street program or not. And I know in our work session, we agreed to coming up with a consolidated work plan, and I'm excited for that to be presented to everyone. But what's really wonderful, kind of as a preview, is that one hundred percent of the items in the work plan align to multiple items in our strategic plan. So every single item was tied into the town's strategic plan as, as created by our staff and our Board of Trustees. So I'm really excited for that to come before everyone, though. So you guys have the opportunity to see that and, and approve it, if, if that's what the will of the board is. And I think that is the next step in us working closer together. So I'm really excited for these opportunities. And I'm so thankful for DOLA for providing these opportunities and additional grant dollars that can apply to our town. And most of all, I, I love the opportunity that we have to empower a group of selfless volunteers who are serving our town above and beyond and, and focusing on specific needs to, to really build the economic vitality, the beautiful downtown, and, and a lot of new things to come. So I'm really excited for you guys to hear the work plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Tim?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I just wanted to thank Trustee Daly on that for recognizing that our Main Street program is a graduate of the Main Streets program as far as that goes. These guys do an outstanding job. And I also wanted to thank Trustee Teets and Trustee Daly for their work with the Main Streets Board in bringing some of this together. I am very excited to see the twenty twenty-five work plan when that comes out. To Trustee Cannon's point, if that necessitates a potential MOU or something going forward, I'm very interested in having that discussion going forward. But otherwise, as far as this MOU between us and DOLA goes, I have no issues with what's been presented here tonight.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, no issues with this MOU whatsoever, and I look forward to seeing that work plan on December tenth. Comments from public on this item? Nope. Further direction from the board?
So I, I do have feedback to offer. I just thought we were in the question period. So I was taken, kind of, I didn't have any questions related to this. One thing I will say in getting to sit in that meeting, and I was hoping to be able to discuss what we are looking at, because I truly feel that what Trustee Cannon is getting to was a discussion in our meeting related to how that work plan is going to operate moving forward. I know that it was stressed, and there, there was concern on overloading of hours, and we discussed looking at a tiered-down approach on what the town could handle for not overwhelming these volunteers with as many events as they do host, and kind of looking at what we can provide and rationally what we have time for. And then they'll know moving forward, when the work plan comes up, this is where we need to allocate our volunteerism at. So I think that was one of the big things. This work plan was to discuss possibilities and the future of looking at how this works for the Town of Wellington, and if we are recreating something that already exists through our chamber office. I know that the Main Streets program itself is something that can be operated in-house with the Town of Wellington. So, and that is something to also look at and consider, but I would definitely suggest that with this work plan, an MOU be established, just so there's an understanding. There was a bit of confusion on what was to be accomplished by whom in our meeting, and I just want to make sure that that is laid out. So there's realistic expectations from a fantastic employee with the town, and there's realistic expectations coming from Main Street on what they might have to step up and handle more of. So I think this MOU moving forward is still wonderful, and there's still options and availability for grants and us to apply for stuff. So I totally support this, but I also support the idea of an MOU with Main Streets for that work plan and understanding.
Okay, thank you. Do I hear a motion on this item?
I make a motion to approve the Memorandum of Understanding between the Colorado Department of Local Affairs and the Town of Wellington.
I'll second.
Clerk, may I get a roll call, please?
Trustee Cannon?
Yes.
Trustee Daly?
Yes.
Trustee Moyer?
Yes.
Trustee Teets?
Yes.
Trustee Wiegand?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Mason?
Yes.
Mayor Shosse?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. All right, on to reports. Are there any reports from our Town Attorney, Mr. Dan Sepienza?
While I wasn't present as a representative of the Town of Wellington, I was there in another capacity. I was able this past week to participate in the Biz West Northern Colorado Affordable Housing Summit, which was a eye-opener, I'll say, and I'll provide, I provided some of that information to Patty, as well as I sent it over to Cody. But just as the, the big number that caught my eye, and while it is a regional affordable housing summit, of course, a lot of the data came out of Fort Collins. But based on some studies, what they consider middle-income families, which would be eighty percent of the area middle-income, in the city of Fort Collins, there are a total of fifty-five houses for sale that would be affordable for a middle-income family and four for rent. And that's pretty startling. The estimated per-unit development cost, it was very development-heavy conference or summit, but the estimated unit development cost far exceeds what would be affordable for a, a middle-income family. So some real eye-opening numbers over there. I'm sure he'll hear a lot more about that. It, it was interesting. I just wanted to share that.
Yeah, well, thank you for sharing. Ms. Garcia, Town Administrator?
Thank you. This is a reminder of our budget retreat on Friday, starting at nine AM. An updated packet will be sent out to you tomorrow. We'll be posting that on the website. We are not, I'm not anticipating providing a Zoom option and things like that. I just don't have a staff person that can sit and watch to make sure the recording continues and doesn't. You know, everybody can be heard, so it'll just be, best just be town staff and, and you all, and then if there's any public, we'll have some, some space available. We'll have a light breakfast from Owl Canyon. We will have box lunches from Slurps. So hopefully, we can just stay on track and, and get everything done. LCSO is planning on being in, present as well towards the end of the meeting, probably around three o'clock, so they can present their budget as well. Thank you. Yes, that'll be here. We'll be like sitting in the U shape and all, so we'll have some snacks, some coffee, things like that.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Staff Communications, everything's in there. Any board reports? Trustee Moyer?
Yes, a few of us were lucky enough to spend the day with Laramie County Sheriff's Office and all the fine men and women and people that serve us daily. We had just eye-opening experiences with all the different departments, evidence. There's in-house DNA testing for rapid identification. There's a very, very clear emphasis on mental health, both for those that work within the sheriff's office and then for those who are taking up residence temporarily in the jail. It was just really wonderful to see all of the different services that we are getting through this contract and to meet the people that are serving us on a daily basis, to meet the canines and see the drones in action. It was just a jam-packed, fascinating day. So I want to say thank you to Lieutenant Cherry and all of the staff there at the sheriff's office for inviting us in and being so welcoming and teaching us so much. It was very, very clear to those of us that were there that for the price point and the contract that we have now, having our own police department sounds fantastic, but there is no way, one hundred percent no way, we would get the level of service and the access to all of the fantastic fun gadgets that we have with our contract now. So just thank you again, and that's it.
Thank you. Trustee Teets?
I am so bummed that I missed this, because this is one of my most fun events that we get to attend besides the Thanksgiving luncheon. That is one that is the second favorite on my list of doing this, because then you get to sit down and have a meal with these amazing officers and mental health staff, and actually all the staff, and you have some of them serving you. So it's honestly, it's one of the things that I enjoy. That, and you get to tour the jail and do the live simulation. I did not get to do that, and I was planning on doing that this go-round. But I was celebrating the future birth of my first grand.
Um, but I was celebrating the future birth of my first grandbaby. So, um, that was important as well. Uh, I do have some rather awesome news or depends on if you wanted a roundabout over by County Road Nine, Highway One and Sixty Two. Um, we met with, uh, the commissioners at our community conversations that the T-Bar hosts for us here in town for Commissioner Kavales to come. And we got news that there is some additional information coming out from some of their ground studies and their traffic patterns. So right now they're looking at transitioning back to a new design system for that interchange. Um, so originally the plan was generally a roundabout and removing the curve that goes out of town. Now they're looking at additional options. They had found a lot of clay in the area that they were looking at to do construction and discuss the, the cost involved of moving out that soil, having to resettle the ground and then bring in truckloads full of new soil to compact and the, the budget definitely is hitting over that $4 million budget that they initially had had for this. Two, I think it was two years ago now that we were looking at this. So there's additional discussions of a light, what that extension would be looking like, removing the curve, keeping the curve and leveling the curve out were all discussions that happened during that meeting. But as it sits now, they are back to some additional investigations and are looking for information. If anyone has information related to residents or items of people running across I-25 during the summer. Um, items like that, we are actually headed into, and one of the CDOT engineers is waiting on plans to proceed for the Safety and Operations Interchange Study. So this was one of the additional key components that we were needing for looking at, and I'm not saying it's happening in the next two or three years, um, but something that will assist Wellington in moving up the ladder when it looks at getting a new interchange put in. Um, so that one is a huge thing. And we also heard about all of the amazing things that are going on at the ranch and the updates with the 4H Center and items like that. So those are my only reports I can think of. If I missed anything, Patty, please feel free to fill me in related to the information on CDOT.
Thank you. Trustee Cannon?
Thanks for that information there. Trustee Teets? My only concern with, with the redesign or changing that intersection there is, is when we went through the annexation process, that intersection was a major, major point of, of concern for us. And that's why the annexation took as long as it did is we want to make sure that, that, that the intersection supported the traffic, which was supported by the traffic study and so forth. And I'd hate for a budgetary, uh, issue at Laramie County to cut that intersection short and, and not do the comprehensive safety measures that's really needed for that, for that high school and middle school there. So, um, I hope our staff is looking at that as well and working for Laramie County. Um, this Friday is a very, very busy day. I have a policy committee meeting at nine o'clock in Denver. We have a budget retreat starting at nine, 10 o'clock or nine o'clock here. And then we have the Chamber of Commerce, uh, annual dinner that evening. Uh, so after Town Administrator Garcia chewed my ear off, I'm going to try to do the policy committee remotely from here while I'm in the budget meeting. Uh, let, let me just, let me just point out right off the bat, CML does, in my opinion, an excellent job of sticking up for municipalities and ensuring that municipalities are not being overburdened by, by state legislation. Uh, that not, we're not being hit with unfunded mandates. Uh, that we're not losing opportunities to us, that, that our powers and authorities are not being taken away through legislation. And that's the whole purpose of the, of the CML Policy Committee is representatives from all these municipalities can, can stand there and say, no, we don't want that, or yes, we do need that. Uh, and it's, and it's been a, uh, really a joy for me to work with, uh, CML, uh, over the years, serving on the policy committee. I thought what I would do is introduce a couple of the, the legislative action items that are on the CML Policy Committee. Um, I'm going to give you just a brief overview of it. Um, and tell you what CML's recommendation is and, and my viewpoint of, of how it affects. Um, and that, I think that's going to set the stage for how we do policy, uh, committee meetings with any legislation coming, uh, coming out. But I only got this packet today, so I didn't have a chance to share that with a lot of people there. But I just want to give you kind of an example of, of, uh, of what's out there. Here's one. Um, and I'm not going to read the whole list. There's seven pages of this. Uh, this one deals with land use with local government permitting of wireless telecommunications facilities. So there's a cell phone connectivity interim study committee that's advancing a bill that basically, uh, establishes that when, when there's an application for siding and construction of a new wireless telecommunications facility or substantial change, uh, when that is submitted to local government, it's deemed approved. It's, they already just assume it's going to be approved if certain conditions exist. Some of those conditions would be, um, number one, if the local government has not approved or rejected the application within 60 days. Uh, whether or not the provider has provided all public notices and so forth. Or the provider's issued notices to the local government that the 60-day period has elapsed, then the application is deemed approved. Now, this is one of those, uh, pieces of legislation that CML is opposing. And I agree with their, with their, with their reasoning for that. Uh, there are several issues there with, with this type of legislation. First of all, it, it puts you under the gun, under that 60-day timeline, uh, to come to a consensus, come to an agreement, come to some kind of approval or denial of, of what they want to do. Um, and that means that our planning staff, which is already pretty well burdened, may have to drop higher priority topics, uh, and, and matters that they're working on, just so they can put together the, the, the right information they needed to meet the obligations under this bill. Uh, so what CML has recommended is that, uh, is that we oppose this because this aggressive, uh, block, uh, for getting these approvals, uh, could cause issues within the local governments. Now I would be, if I went to the CML Policy Committee without consulting with the rest of the trustees, I would also oppose that as well because I know what that unfunded mandate would do and I understand what, what that's kind of, these kind of bills can do for staff and creating issues. Um, I guess what I'm trying to do is, 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 is to let you know that if I'm going to be there at the CML Policy Committee, I'm going to do my best to represent the town of Wellington and the interest of our staff, of our residents and our Board of Trustees. So this would be one of those that I oppose. So whenever the CML has legislation in the policy committee, there's, there's usually three separate actions that they'll, that they recommend. One is to prove it. Uh, because, uh, it's not going to create a burden, uh, it's, it, it follows, uh, uh, preserves municipal, uh, uh, powers and authorities. Uh, one of them would be to amend it, means this is, this is basically good legislation, but the way it's written, uh, creates issues for our local municipalities. So they recommend amending those. Or like in this case, they come out and they just say, no, we oppose that. Um, and I think they have good reasoning behind why they make these recommendations. And quite frankly, I have rarely seen, uh, a single municipality say, no, I, I approve that. You know, when they, when they make the, the poll, uh, I think everyone trusts that CML is looking at for their best interest in the town. Uh, so I'm going to be attending, uh, our budget, uh, retreat. I'm going to have a, an earphone on and I'm going to have my laptop up so I can kind of follow what's going on there. So I'm going to be a little divided there, but, uh, uh, I am not going to drive to Denver and miss this budget retreat.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Trustee Cannon.
I have one question related to that. When you see these items come up, is it a possibility for you to send it to us just so if we can provide feedback? Cause like with the one that was suggested, um, and I just know this from dealing with friends that are in North Carolina right now and friends that are in Florida right now. This was to get wireless internet net to unserved or underserved communities quick. And that's what they were looking at with as far as what this bill was. I understand that it can put a burden on like a planning department. But at the same time, I don't know if any of you guys have seen local news or anything like that. But we, we have US citizens dying right now in North Carolina and Florida. And the people in North Carolina, I mean, they don't have internet service. They can't say, hey, we're okay. Hey, we need a heli ride out of here because we have lacerations or. So I think that was one of the reasons and, and luckily I'm grateful that Starlink stepped up and is offering internet service. But that's my understanding of kind of what that suggestion was, was to try and get it as quick as possible to communities that were underserved. So that, that's the kind of stuff I would like to be able to provide feedback. If you're the one that is there and representing us, I understand that we put you in that position to represent us. I would just say that there's so many different angles to look at that on and understanding kind of, I would like to know, I don't need to offer my opinion if you don't want it, but I would just kind of like to know what is coming to us and what you're seeing because we might have feedback that might be a little bit different. So that's what I kind of ask is.
Thank you so much. Uh, this particular legislation isn't necessarily about restoring services. This is about extending new services or making major reconstruction to existing services and so forth. So it does touch on reaching the underserved, uh, areas and so forth like that. But, um, anyway, I just wanted to use that as an example of, of the type of, uh, reports and the, and the legislation coming up and, and why CML and why municipalities may vote up and down on that. So thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Glad you'll, you'll be at the budget retreat. Um, Trustee Wiegand?
I have no report and I do apologize for missing last Saturday too. I had previous commitments. Uh, but the sheriff's department, what we have here and what they offer us is second to none. And the services that they do from the least, from just the patrolling and just the communication with the citizens up into the most horrendous things that could happen here. I mean, they got our back and, uh, i- it's amazing when you go down there and seeing the facilities and the well-trained people that they have there and the training that the police that we get here, the, the sheriffs are second to none. So really appreciate what you guys do and keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Trustee Daly?
A big thank you to trustee Cannon. Uh, you know, we're speaking of, well, I, I definitely want to recognize the maturity of our organizations. We just continue and continue to get better. But you participating in CML is like an example of our board maturing too. So, uh, what a wonderful resource. Um, I'm specific, like especially interested if for any reason you, uh, ever disagree with the CML recommendations. I really hope that you bring those back to us. I, I know you would, but that would be something I'd be really interested in. Um, I have really enjoyed for the things I have participated and I'm glad that you're so much more active. So thank you for doing that for our board. Um, speaking of Laramie County, uh, we got to see some of the resources that are already available and have been, uh, used in Wellington. The drones specifically are like the TV stuff that you see. Heat register, zooming in on people. It was amazing to see and how quickly they can deploy it and how frequently it's already in Wellington. Uh, for a lot of our major events in a recent, several recent incidents where they teamed up canines and drones in order to find suspects in our neighborhoods. So, uh, the resources that are available to us are amazing. So thank you to them for sharing that information with us. I would ne- never know, um, otherwise. Uh, for our press update, um, I just want to brag on pros real quick. They request, uh, a lot of information. So they're well informed based to make recommendations and participate in the community and represent the town as a volunteer. Um, recently the presentation that occurred was with our planning department. Um, they want to make sure that they understand impact fees, uh, those relating to parks and trails in particular, um, and how the planning process works and what's in the works right now for the town of Wellington and in the near future. Um, it's just amazing to see how proactive they are. Uh, and again, how well informed they are when they bring their recommendations to our board. Um, and in addition to that, they're continuing to work on the Veterans Memorial that will be coming to Community Park. It is a full-on community initiative grassroots type of projects where, uh, there is a need for a gathering place, a plaza to, to remember and, uh, celebrate our veterans. So if you need more information on that, you can find that on the, uh, Town of Wellington website. And ways to participate and give also to that project. So please, please take a look at it or reach out to me if you have any questions. Um, my other board, uh, that I, I'm a liaison to is Main Streets. I already spoke to that earlier in the night, but, uh, an extra thank you to those volunteers who are tirelessly working on behalf of the town to make it better. Um, and then the last thing I wanted to mention was a big congratulations to our Eagles, our football team who had the opportunity to play at Canvas Stadium. This was amazing. They were on the big screen. Um, and it was the most exciting game I've seen in a very long time. Um, congratulations to, uh, our players for winning the Box Elder Cup and, uh, representing Wellington so well. So congrats, guys.
Perfect. Thank you, Trustee Daly. Member Din?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for the board for all the great, uh, updates this evening. Um, just a real quick one here, uh, the Laramie County Regional Opioid Abatement Council is continuing to work on their budget allocation for 2025 and is actively reviewing, uh, grant proposals. Uh, myself along with Commissioner Shattuck McNally are, uh, advocating for LC SO in this regard. So, uh, Lieutenant Cherry, hopefully that is, is of good news to you, but, uh, certainly we want to make sure that our co-response units are continued to be funded over the next year. Unfortunately, we have some council members that are, uh, seem to be somewhat opposed to, uh, funding our law enforcement folks. So, um, I am continuing to push on that. Um, and I did want to just ask trustee Daly, is there a deadline for donating to the Veterans Memorial?
Not as of yet. So we're just getting things rolling. Um, but we've already had a silent auction, which I know you participated. Thank you very much. So we're readily and steadily getting more money, but yeah, uh, hit me up. We'll talk more about it, but absolutely, uh, not a deadline as of yet.
Perfect. Thank you. Um, Lieutenant Cherry, put on a wonderful event for Wellington and Bertha. Definitely appreciate all of that hard work you put into organizing it, um, everybody in the organization that was there to present. Um, one heck of an organization full of a lot of wonderful people doing great things for the community. Um, so thank you guys for all that you do in serving us and keeping us safe. Um, Ms. Anderson? I'm going to say this one more time. Congratulations in being the top 40, under 40. Um, that is a huge accomplishment and, uh, well deserved. So good job there. Um, I don't have anything else. Um, you know, I'm going to end it like I usually do. Love you guys. You're great. Um, working together, teamwork makes the dream work. Let's keep doing it. Um, all in favor to adjourn?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. I will now adjourn. The regular meeting time being eight o'clock PM.